I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, June the 5th, 2018, meeting of the Irel County Board of Commissioners, and I would ask that you join us in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Jones, if you could please outline any adjustments to the agenda?
We have two adjustments. One is to remove the economic development matter under closed session, and the other is an addition under announcements of vacancies on boards and commissions, and that is to add the announcement for the State's full planning board ETJ. That's one appointment.
Any additional adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as proposed? Slow move. Motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, before we go into an actual presentation of a special recognition, I would like to point out a member of the Boy Scouts who's with us this evening, Mr. Christian Nicholson, who's a member of Jim Mixon's scout troop, works out of, and he also attends First ARP Church. So, welcome, Christian, knocking out a merit badge requirement. So, we'll be on our best behavior. Yep. Cut that off at the pass. All right. At this time, I'd like to present an award, and if our ICATS team could please come forward and join us on the dais.
All right. You know, everybody who's seen the bus, it's the bands, I should say, that security about time, sometimes in town, sometimes you can predict where they're going to be. Sometimes they just materialize out of nowhere, or on a commission, taking our residents to medical appointments, getting them about town if they have difficulty making their arrangements. And they're just a tremendous group of employees, many of them, this is a retirement job, many of them, that's a full-time job. Bottom line, there was, they're all focused on full-time, 100% service. And ahead of this team, as Brad Johnson, he's our ICATS director, and we want to point out his, of their wife is with us, and the world, he's lost weight recently. And I think that it must be different around the house from anything, this, asleep deprivation, that's. We also have Jeff Rassley, who's our operations manager, and we have three award-winning drivers who have bested the competition in a ICATS rodeo, statewide rodeo, down in Wilmington. And it is a competition with a number of different events, mostly really been able to negotiate cones and park, and been able to safely and expeditiously accomplish their mission. They have a little internal competition, I believe that Jeff Ross, maybe you'd like to just share a little bit about the type of events, and how these folks got to be standing?
We all did. ICATS, annual rodeo, our ADEO, to help keep our drivers' pain snuck. And we used to say format in our competition to stay in the national forum, basically different stations with cones and our barrels. Our drivers have to sneak through from the thing connecting, barrel apart, back on both fast speeds, slow speed, whatever. And so, ICATS, we'll take our top three winners, we have a representative state championship, which this year was a building, and we put against 20 other competitors from all around the state, from Carolina, and our guys took first place as a team. Individually, Chastity took second place in the entire state. So, we should be really happy that, A, we won, but B, because the top-notch drivers didn't care for citizens every day of the week.
So, this is the team, and Chastity, Adams, Frank Ball, and Sazal Barra. And so, I'd like to, this is the 2018 NCPTA slash North Carolina Department of Field Transportation rodeo, first-place team in the van competition. And for second place in the individual competition, Pasadena. Congratulations. I have a call for speech, but I'll be, sorry.
Hey, Desert.
Strong silence. Maybe we could get a picture of somebody, get a still picture here, I have a camera, and if we get the commissioners, if y'all come around the backside of this, we'll get all the officials tonight. Thank you. That's good. Thank you, Jeff.
Brad, I hear you're supposed to have a new back panel advertising going on, say, aren't you?
Yeah, we do. We have advertising on our vehicle currently, and we have about 20 other vehicles that are getting advertising on the back, so about $4,000 here.
Clean.
Twenty years, company, your business, around now.
It's an enterprise fund. Hey, this evening, we do not have any appointments before the board. We do have two public hearings, so we'll start off with the hearing to request a rezoning from Matt Santamana, and if Mr. Matthew Todd, our project director, could give us a summary of this proposal.
Good evening to the board. The rezoning we have before us tonight is a 10-acre track along 150 River Highway. The property is outlined in blue, and you can see on the screen, staff is recommending approval of this, and our planning board also voted 7-0 in favor of the request. The Horizon Plan calls for this area to be corridor commercial, and it is adjacent to county general business zoning and some highway business, and then also Mooresville zoning of CMX, which is a commercial zoning designation. Again, just a map showing the land use plan, that it falls within the corridor commercial. An image of the property as it exists today, and you can see the commercial properties to the west and east, and also across. This is property on our left, River Highway on the right. Looking across the road at a couple different commercial properties. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Now, this portion of River Highway is part of that 150 widening project, correct?
It is, and a right-of-way acquisition is starting this year. Some property owners may have already been contacted at this point.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No calls or contacts against this rezoning?
We've not heard any opposition. There's none at planning board, and we've not received any phone calls against it.
And possibly something to do with boating or marine some form or another?
I believe so. It is a straight rezoning, but yeah, the proposed use, I think, is moving off Dooley Road, and it is a boat sales and service. So, that's not going to be a real big trip generator.
Any other questions or comments? At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we have two folks that are signed up to be for a three-minute presentation. Mr. Devin Staley. Mr. Staley, if you could please, just for the record, state your name and address.
Devin Staley, 924 Main Street, North Wilkesboro. I'm with Blue Ridge Engineering. I'll be the civil engineer on the project, and just here to answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, design hasn't begun yet. It's contingent upon the rezoning approval, so.
This is in a WS4 watershed. Would you anticipate a high-density or low-density development?
At this point, I would anticipate high-density, and we're aware that we would need to come back for that approval once we get into the design phase, yes.
And for the audience tonight, high-density in WS4 is going to be approximately 50% land coverage with a retention pond.
That's correct. Maximum 50%.
Any additional questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Staley.
Thank you.
And we also have Matt Santamana, if you'd like to speak, as the owner of the property.
Good evening. I'm Matt Santamana. I'm the owner of Race City Marine with my wife, Lynette, and my grandson. Thanks for having us here. We're looking, as we've grown over the last 10 years on Dooley Road, we're looking for a new home for our location, and with the new road coming in on Dooley Road as well as 150, that property is being reduced where we are. So, we're looking for a great opportunity to service our customers, be close to the lake, and make sure that we're there for our customers and help grow the community. It is such a boating and lake-oriented community. Do you have any questions for me?
Just for the record, your address?
Oh, 112 Dime Lane, Mooresville, North Carolina, 28117.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming.
Well, it's great to know that we have an Irel County business that is going to be able to expand and thrive and continue to serve the citizens and the customers in the South Irel area.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else that would like to be heard? I've exhausted the actual signup list, but is anybody that's come in that would like to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve in favor of the zoning map amendment, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adoption of our 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public's interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it is contained within a commercial corridor and is adjacent to other commercially-zoned property.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. All right. Mr. Todd, I think you're done.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will proceed to item 7.2, which is a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget for Irel County. At this time, I would ask our county interim county manager, Ms. Beth Jones, to please share with us the highlights and any modifications and amendments.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. This is the culmination of the county's budget process that began back in December, and the proposed budget was presented initially on May the 1st. It was followed up by two budget workshops, which were on May the 10th and May the 14th. There were three changes that were made as a result of the workshops and subsequent discussions. These changes amounted to a net increase in the general fund budget of $25,000. So, it added $25,000 to the total budget. It utilizes $1,044,733 in fund balance, and the proposed budget is balanced at $205,119. This will maintain the tax rate at 52.75 cent per 100 valuation. It's based on a tax base of $23,174,640,000 with an estimated tax collection rate of 98.85%. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Ms. Jones? Any comments?
Only comment I have on this, Mr. Chairman, was this was a very hard-fought budget to come in what we did.
Mr. Chairman, I would add that the staff made many cuts before it reached our desk, and the fact that a lot of monies were moved from CIP over into budget ordinances is the result in the largest increase.
Yes, and that's actually a good point. One of the things that we did when we saw that we had major projects that were coming online, and a lot of them were coming online this upcoming fiscal year, we started saving money and putting money aside to prepare for these. So, one of the reasons that you're seeing an increase in our budget, but you're not seeing an increase in the tax, the tax rate, is because all those funds that we've been setting aside trying to save, we're now going to be using. So, you're seeing those funds that we've saved, we're going to begin expending those with the jail that's coming online, the public safety building that's coming online. A lot of those things we've saved for, now that they're coming online, there's going to be an increase in operational expense of those. So, that's one of the reasons you're seeing an increase in the budget. It is not that we have an absorbent amount of extra money to spend, it's that we have saved for these projects because we knew they were coming up, and now we're starting to expend the funds to maintain those, those new projects that are coming online.
Any other comments?
I just want to say on behalf of the General Government Task Force, Jeff and I and the board, thank you and Susan and Deb and staff for the work that went into this. It was a lot of due diligence, and we appreciate you holding the line on it.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and inquire if there is anyone that would like to be heard. There's no one that has signed up as of now. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close this public hearing and inquire if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the 2018-19 budget coming up.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I'd just like to wind up, also jumping in there and thanking our staff for the many, many hours of work that has gone into preparing this budget that actually started back in December, as we were given a first look at potential revenues and potential asks, and gave general guidance and direction. The staff then worked very closely with our department heads to pair back what are very valid additional requests for funding, for personnel and programs, but which to stay within the confines of our budget guidance and to retain the minimum required that we want of at least 18% in our fund balance. They were able to present to us a budget that is balanced within the norms that we provided. So, we want to thank the staff for their very hard work, many hours, and so now you can go home and think about next year.
I would also want to thank the previous boards and previous manager and administrative team in the past, because they, as Beth said, they set us up over the years of due diligence and good money management to put us in positions to tackle some of these projects without having to raise that. So, I wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you for a job well done in years past.
Absolutely. And I'd like to thank the board for supporting your budget team and your management team. You gave amazing direction. It's a lot easier to do a budget when you know the priorities of the board. So, you gave us really clear direction in, at the winter retreat. We appreciate that, and the department heads did an amazing job. They really sharpened their pencil, and even when we sat down and talked to them, they cut, they made additional cuts, because they knew that this was going to be one of the tightest years. This is the final year before revow, and that historically is your tightest year, and it was true this year as well. It is not a myth, it is a reality. It was one of our tightest years. But we were a team, we worked together, and a lot of our department heads got very creative. They went out and looked for alternate revenue sources, they looked for grants where they could, and I appreciate them working with us and doing those things, and the board being supportive of that.
Well, thank you all. The remaining items on the, no, we have actually one item, number 8.1, that is an administrative matter that we were not able to include in the consent agenda, and is Deb offered. Could you present that? That's the request from the Finance Department for approval and adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget ordinance. Okay, well, I thought we had the public hearing. So, we just had that. Okay, well, that was a different cleanup matter. Well, move on to the other administrative items appropriate for the consent agenda, and if you would please summarize those, Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. First item was a request from our emergency communications department to approve a contract modification made for mission-critical partners to the existing open contract dated February the 29th, 2016, for professional services which were funded by the grant. This is no new revenue, this is just changing and modifying the scope and updating. Request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 39 to record insurance claim proceeds and to appropriate those funds to the respective departments for which the claims were filed. Request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 to appropriate fund balance to Mountmore and Fire Tax Fund. A request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 41 to appropriate fund balance to complete funding in the Public Safety Complex Capital Fund. Request from Troutman Fire Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 42 to withdraw $300,000 from the Fire Tax District Fund Balance to help fund station renovations by paying down existing debt. A request from Administration for approval of a renewal agreement with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts for the Administrative District Attorney. And then a request from the Deputy Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting of May 15, 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there any further discussion of any of those items? Are there none? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Slow move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hopp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We do have several announcement of vacancies occurring on various boards and commissions. We have one announcement for Partners Behavioral Health Board of Directors. We have two announcements for the Irel Canning Planning Board. One of those was announced last meeting, and an additional one is being announced this meeting, so that we'll deal with both of those vacancies two weeks from now. Also have an announcement for the Mooresville Planning ETJ representatives on their Mooresville Planning Board, and there's two announcements there, and also one announcement for the State's Full Planning Board ETJ representative. That's one announcement. So, all of these positions, I would encourage people to go online and look at the various boards and what they do, and if you have any interest, we would encourage any interested citizens in applying, and you can get the application form right there online and submit it, and we will go ahead and make the appointments at our meeting two weeks from now. What day is that? June?
19.
19. We don't have any appointments to boards or commissions this evening. Is there any unfinished business? Are there none? This is not a public comment period. Is there any new business? And is there any county managers' report left over after the budget?
I'm very happy the budget is done. Just want to Just one announcement of a special called meeting scheduled for Thursday, May the 7th, which is this Thursday at 5:00 at the Unity Center, this will be a joint workshop regarding the quarter cent sales tax with the school boards.
And that's June 7th?
I'm sorry, June 7th, yes. I apologize.
Okay. We had one matter for closed session related to personnel, and there's no action to be taken at this time. Is there any further business to come before the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to?
I'll make, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if we needed to make a motion to adjourn or recess till Thursday.
We will be opening, and the clerk will be there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, I've been waiting to make one motion, so I'm going to make this and two adjourn.
That's the most important.
Exactly.
Any further discussion on the motion? No? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously, so we adjourn.